Why don't we get started? It's the Plington School Committee meeting for Monday, June 12th, 2017. I'm gonna start reading a little blurb ahead of this, which I guess we should be doing. Just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. So with that, we're gonna dive into it. We may jump around a little bit today, just because we have one member who's running late, and some of these discussions might be good to make sure we have them here for that. But we'll kick it off with acknowledging and scheduling visitors, and considering the chairs in front of me are empty, there is none to be done there. So that's fine, it's a nice warm summer day, and I think I'd rather be out there enjoying that too, but we have business to do today. Why don't we jump into the minutes? We have both the regular session minutes for May 22nd and executive session minutes for May 22nd and April 24th. On the regular minutes, did folks have any comments, suggestions? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes from our meeting for May 22nd, 2017, and to accept and release the minutes from our May 22nd executive session and our April 24th executive session.
I would just note a brief correction. My last name has got an O instead of an E, so if we can, if we would take those as, with that minor amendment, I would entertain a second for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Okay. I did not have any correspondence to the town mailbox. Did we have anything else?
Yep.
Onto new business. Well, I guess this should move to old business next time, right? But some of them will go away. The Denit driveway sign, that's gonna be a CASA project.
Okay.
So we can keep this on the agenda, maybe, and check in, because I'm sure we'll need to talk about it at some point.
So move the Denit unfinished?
Yep. The sixth grade gift, that will be presented at graduation, and I believe what sixth grade is doing is not involve us to approve anything, because they're going to be donating funds in order to, either to fund or help fund, depending on where that comes out, some new lighting for the stage.
Nice.
It's gonna be a pretty decent size gift.
Nice.
This time, then we get some good fundraising, lots of support from the community, and we appreciate that. So we figured that was the easier way to do that.
Very nice.
So we'll have, we'll present that on, in a week.
Okay.
While you're running between three graduations.
No worries, got that.
And I don't have any additional updates on the community garden at this point. Unfinished business, of course, water treatment update. All right. Well, we have had, meaning Joy and I have had a fair amount of work on this over the last, since we met last. I think we had talked about that we had a meeting set up to talk with Green Seal Environmental, not just the engineer that was working with this, but we actually met with the president of the company. We had a good meeting together, and then I followed up directly with the president, and been working with her over the last week and a half, two weeks. And we've kinda gone in a slightly different direction than where we were going to, in that even as we started trying to think about putting together the RFP for this, or not the RFP, the bid package for this project, it became very clear that we don't necessarily know what we're doing to put together the bid package. It's very complicated. The other thing that we learned during our call is that not only is that complicated, but this whole project is going to be complicated, and the process that they go through in order to even install the equipment requires a fair amount of engineering work as they go along. Some of that was included in our original contract. If you remember looking at that, there were sort of six items that they were going to do for the contracted price. We have gotten through four of them, and there are two left. One is the oversight engineering work as the project goes on. In other words, the contractor says, "I'm bringing, these are the valves that I'm using," and they have to get approval from the engineer that yes, those are the correct valves, or yes, they're in a correct substitute. The other piece is, is we need a manual at the end, and that's one of the requirements that DEP has as part of that. So both of those are in the contract, but there's a lot of other stuff that was not in that, including when we saw, I think, back in February, Garrett Keegan had put together sort of a list of items that they would be able to provide for additional services. What we also noticed is that we were pretty close to paying for all of the contract that we'd originally set up, and that was concerning, which is part of why we had the conversation. And I think the other piece that we've, that we noticed in having that discussion was that what they bid and what they've delivered so far is actually pretty different. We had bid out for a pretty simple water treatment system, and in going through the whole process, we're doing a lot more than just manganese and iron removal. We're dealing with the, you know, getting the water balanced properly so that we can remove any corrosion issues, and some other items too. So what probably should have happened along the way is, there should have been some change orders. There should have been, which we would do and recognize in writing, and move forward. Green Seal acknowledged that, and also acknowledged the fact that this is something that they feel, and as we do, that this needs to get done. So they made a proposal to us to really sort of pick this up and run with it through to the end, meaning getting together a bid package for us, we will actually have to put it out to bid, but then helping us to evaluate what comes back, helping us to choose a consultant appropriately, and help through that whole process to the point that they can turn over manuals to us at the end with a functioning water treatment system, and done and done with DEP and the whole thing. I also had another consultant that I was talking to take a look over this contract, just to see if there was, thought there was anything, this is contract, actually revised work order, to see if there was anything missing. He said it looked pretty good. And I did send this around to everyone on Friday. I would note that we did make a change to the payment language, and I'll read that in a minute. One of the things to note here is that basically, we are looking to pay additional monies, but we're actually getting additional services for that. They are going to provide the original services that were required under the first work order and contract, and they're gonna provide that for what was agreed to. And then they have given us, really was a pretty reasonable fee request for all of the other work.
Yep.
So I think, you know, there's been an acknowledgement on their part that we could have had much better communication, and that has certainly hampered the process, but they have also really stepped up and understand the need to get the system in and to get it done. And I think we're acknowledging that this has become a bigger project than I think we thought even three years ago, and that therefore it's justified to do that. So the revised work order that we have in front of us tonight, I think it's pretty detailed about that. I do also have, which we'll have for the file, a breakdown, an itemized breakdown of what the fee, what they've estimated to come up with the fee. And so the language before, it was kind of a little funny language where it talked about that they'll, they will do their regular work hours, their hourly rate, and essentially they were trying to say, but they aren't going to exceed an additional 14.5 unless we have written, prior written agreement. We did make that change. I talked to Heather, who's the president there, on Friday, and now it reads, "Client shall pay GSEA lump sum fee of $14,500 for the services outlined herein. Should additional services be required, the proposed service and associated fees must be approved in writing prior to commencement. Note hourly rates are presented within the attachment in here, and no retainer will be required for the task, the start of this task order." So I think the language is just clear. I don't think we're, we've changed it really from what they were, this is what their intent was as well. And so I'm gonna stop there for a moment. Let's see if anyone has questions.
My only question is, to Joy, the position that we talked about for the last few weeks, is that been resolved?
It has. We have hired Kara.
Okay.
And she actually came to a meeting on Friday afternoon, because she happened to be in town, which was very nice of her. So she'll, you know, she'll be able to be helpful, obviously stepping in at the two-thirds way through, or, where are we in it? In the beginning, I guess, I don't know.
I don't know.
It's a little confusing, but...
We'll see how fast this other part goes.
Yeah, so we'll see how this all goes, but I guess my only question is, are we responsible for going out to bid? Did I hear, just hear you correctly?
We, they will get us everything we need to do that. They can't actually bid it for us, so we will either have to use, go through Dale to do that, assuming, depending on how quickly we can get this together, if we can have Dale post it, and, or we'll, we'll just have to figure that out. I mean, we have that issue that Dale is, is done at the end of the month, and we don't have anyone taking his place as yet.
Are you able to do that?
Traditionally, for projects of this magnitude, because it's the town's, one of the towns out of, the town traditionally does go out to bid for that, but what I'm hearing is that we're gonna get a bid package, everything that's, it's done short of being in the newspaper.
Exactly.
And they'll let it go in the newspaper, then forward it to all those that show interest.
Right.
And then they'll also help with the evaluation.
They are gonna, yeah, so, I mean, if we approve this, and the selectmen sign it tonight, that's the other piece of it, then they will be here to help us do everything moving forward, but for us actually putting out the bid itself.
What I was getting at is, since you're going to see the selectman this evening, and Dale is leaving, and I'm not sure if that bid package will be prepared before Dale is done. If we had a support or vote of the selectmen, Christine has done the training, if we had everything, I think we would be able to do the...
If we have all the bid documents...
We could, we could do that, but I think the selectmen would have to allow us to do that.
Yes, and I'll bring that up with them.
Okay.
The goal would be to get this all out before Dale is done.
That would be my goal also.
My understanding from Heather is that they're looking for our go-ahead.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning, and they're gonna move pretty quickly on this.
Be able to do that, okay, perfect, that's even better.
Because I'd also like to get it into the register, I mean, that's the other important thing.
Was it CRA or something like that?
Yeah, so the, so that's, that's sort of, that's sort of where we're at.
Right. And I did wanna publicly thank John for all the extra work he put in to make this happen.
Yeah, I know more about this than I ever intended.
Yeah.
But there we go.
Me both.
But no, I...
I'll tell you about sewers too, if you're interested.
I feel, we've had very productive discussions, and they seem very motivated on this, and that they feel that it's just a project that needs to be done. So I, so I think we're, I think we're in a, we're in a good place. So, and the other thing is, is that, like, I think you're right, and I think we gotta get, I, we got some clarity at the selectmen's meeting last week. Anything to do with big projects like this, with a building, not routine maintenance, we gotta make sure we go through the selectmen, have them sign.
Yes.
And so that's what we're gonna, I have time with them tonight to have them do it.
Great, thank you.
But I think we should, we should make, you know, a motion here to, to support our recommendation that the selectmen move ahead, something to that effect. As long as we're comfortable.
So make a motion to accept the revised work order, and the additional expenditure of $14,500 with Green Seal.
And to recommend the selectmen to sign it.
And to recommend the selectmen to sign it.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So more to come. I'll let folks know what the next steps are and what our proposed timing is after I have a discussion tomorrow with Green Seal.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Playground, did you wanna talk to that?
I have a bit of news.
Yep.
Lynn actually reached out to me after the last meeting. She has a friend who works for Marshfield Public Schools, and those were the playgrounds I was interested in. However, as anybody who works in public schools knows, it's not necessarily the time you want to get one solicited phone call, someone asking about playgrounds. So I'm gonna wait until July and make that phone call, but Lynn's already let her friend know to expect a phone call. So we have an inside source, they've done several playgrounds in their elementary schools recently, to great success, and with the variety of funding sources. So I look forward to making that phone call, and I appreciate them getting that contact from us.
Great. Okay. Standing committees. Administrative review, nothing. Negotiations?
All set.
Nothing for that. Union 31?
No meeting yet.
But we will need one.
We will need one for bids, right, Christine?
We need one over the summit to approve.
That's really interesting lettering, A, B, A, C, D, E, F. Hmm, interesting.
Well, A gets to come twice. Okay, PAC?
We have a meeting this Wednesday, hopefully to vote on the budget for our second vote and final vote to officially make that our budget, while also be reorganized.
Nothing with policy?
No.
Nothing additional on capital improvement?
That was plenty, thanks.
Okay. Anything legislative?
It's quiet on the west front, but it's kind of a scary thing. State budget is pretty, pretty far in the hole for this fiscal year, and they haven't put out their final budget for next year.
Okay. All right. Mr. Vino?
Thank you, John. We have reached June of 2017, which again is hard to believe, but here we are. We're hoping to close out with enrollment of 212 students. We have had, before I get to the important dates, we've had a lot of parents that have been volunteering here, either at Field Day or on field trips, and it's great that the community wants to be a part of what's going on here, so thank you for the parents that have volunteered, spent their time, money, and busy schedule, it means a lot. We still have a few more events coming up for our students. June 14th, the kindergarteners will be going to Lobster Tales. On June 19th, we will be having our grade six graduation here at 6 o'clock. June 20th is the last day of school, that's gonna be noon dismissal, and I will send a reminder about that. And the next event after that is the school committee meeting here at 5 o'clock on July 24th.
I think it's the 17th, isn't it?
Yes.
Isn't it, isn't it early because of the...
We moved it.
Because of the closeout?
Yes. Let me see, actually, that date doesn't sound right.
16th, 17th?
Seventeenth?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yep.
That should read, "School Committee Meeting, 5 o'clock on July 17th."
Yeah, it's not, no.
Yep. Okay.
Is that the date you have, Christine?
Monday of the 17th is Sunday night.
Okay.
It's a, the town of Plington is very easy to work with, that closing process.
Yeah, I have the 24th in mind, but that's not right.
Okay. Any, any updates to kindergarten enrollment or study?
Look, study, 31.
Okay, great.
Even in, equal in and out.
Yep.
To give them that chance.
All right. Christine, why don't we go down to the financial report?
I have just a brushful to take. When you look at the financial, do you prefer the way that it's organized, or sort of flip it and see? I struggle on this front page.
Yeah.
And when I would stabilize the math, I'm just, when I flip it, I have to turn everything around. What do you think?
Yeah, I think it needs to...
I liked it last time. It didn't work.
You like it like that?
See, look, if you just go like that, that's not easy. That's not hard.
Every time I do it, I have to turn the paper around, it's not working for me.
Just go like this, just go like that.
How about this, since she's the one who has to deal with the numbers, she can put it however she likes.
Oh, yeah.
We've had some debates.
That works for me.
Because people, you know, this way is perfectly reasonable to many people.
I would more typically look at it like this.
That's how I would look at it.
Because then I got the numbers in a row.
All right. I want to read the information.
But, hey, if this is our greatest issue, I'm absolutely thrilled.
We're great shape, we're great shape.
Well, I'll move on to the other stuff then.
Okay.
The good news is, we're gonna make it through the end of the year.
That's always good news.
We're not gonna have lots of fun stuff though, there's gonna be a snow balance that we're gonna make through the end of the year. There are a couple areas that I just wanted to bring up that have continued to be a concern as they work earlier. One of them is the homeless transportation, and when you're looking at the financial, that reflects all activity through May, so that deficit will continue to grow. And then the special education, the contracted services line has grown to a deficit of almost $18,000, and that's because there was some new services that were needed for an area district student. Our maintenance accounts, this timing has started to show deficit, so that's kind of reasonable, that's from all the activity that's gone on, the building, they're taking care of who they can, and there is one area, we have a deficit in AIDS in the special education section, but in the regular section you have the surplus, so there was some movement in the AIDS. And then the only, the highlight is at the very end, we do have a balance of about $54,000 in our out-of-district vocational, and that will be returned to the town. Any questions?
It's nice to have you back.
Thank you.
Yes, I totally agree.
Okay. All right. Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to point out, you have in your packet the year-end review in front of you. Unfortunately, the last two pages did not get copied, so I apologize, I can forward them to you as a PDF if you would like, but I do have the important things written down as far as what is relevant to Denit. So this is always a fun time of year, as we go through and reflect on all of the accomplishments this year. To start off, when we start with our topic of administration, we, our objective this year was to really continue to build capacity within the administrative team. We participated, the superintendent, myself, and the building principals, in a professional learning community, using a book called Grit by Angela Duckworth. We met monthly and had great conversations, right Pete? Around, around the idea of, of her work. I also used that same book, meeting with the four curriculum coordinators within the region, and we also had a very fruitful conversation, monthly around that. We also, I also met with the assistant principals this year. Unfortunately, Denit doesn't have an assistant principal, but the others, we met monthly, reading Ross Green's work, Lost at School, which is a behavior management component, and it was a wonderful conversation. It was a great time for all of them to come together and talk about some issues that they've been dealing with. So when we turn to the K-6 Curriculum Assessments and Reading Intervention, you'll see that we have adopted the new K-5 Curriculum Resources and Professional Development to Support Implementation of our new science frameworks. We also completed a 6-8 Science Curriculum Project pilot and Professional Development to Support Implementation. Melissa Farrell spent an inordinate amount of time organizing and labeling our K-6 science supplies, and found that we have a lot of resources within the building that we don't need to purchase, so she's saving us a lot of money, which is wonderful. And also being able to have those materials so our children can have really on, hands-on learning experiences. Our K-5 Math and Reading Benchmarking, we had a tri-annual math and reading benchmarking in grades 2 through 5. We were using data to inform instruction and guide intervention with Title I supports. Our completion of the tri-annual online DIBL assessment in grades K and 1 also occurred, and I was able to meet with the principals mid-year to discuss our kindergarten data, which was very interesting, and I'm looking forward to looking at more data with our principals as we continue. We also have positive feedback from teachers regarding the use of our STAR assessments to help guide instruction. Our reading interventions, we had six days of professional development and training in the integration of the Level Literacy Intervention, which is an evidence-based intervention that, by Fountas and Pennell. We adopted the LLI curriculum materials across all elementary schools, and staff observations and feedback regarding implementation and the use of the reading interventions occurred. Skipping over, I'm just going to highlight some things, our coordinated program review, we did receive feedback, it came in for our English Language Learners category, Civil Rights and Special Education, and I'm happy to report that all four districts are operating within compliance for ELL, Civil Rights and Special Education, as demonstrated through submitted progress reports to DESI. Site visits from DESI also provided further evidence for compliance. It was a huge undertaking, and we'll do it again in five years, under technology. Even though this isn't applicable here, it's just something to reward for the, be excited about for our student, your students, as they move up into the secondary level. We are in year, we just completed year three of the Chromebook Initiative at the high school, and it's been met with great positive results. We also continue to build our elementary Chromebook carts, and we had monthly goals for utilization of technology to support the completion of assessments for immediate feedback. As far as professional development goes, we offered two graduate courses, Skillful Teacher, which is through Research for Better Teaching, and this summer we're, we're full, 35 participants in our responsive classroom, K through 5. We continued with workshop opportunities for teachers in the area of SEI, which is Sheltered English Immersion, which is meeting a compliance regulation for teachers receiving relicensure. Our district professional development days, which were focused on meeting diverse needs, and they were very successfully attended. And our administrative leadership team participated in Planning for Success, which, which the superintendent will get into under her report, and that was, that was, we created district action plans. Our state assessment system, our NCAT Action Plan was created with six goals, under the topics of instructional strategies, professional development strategies, and technology strategies, and implementation was extremely successful. Under wellness, our school nurses continue to distribute their wellness newsletter, and Halifax and KIS, Kingston Intermediate School, followed suit with implementing breakfast program with great success, and that was done under the guidance of Denit, so that was very helpful, they used Denit as a, as a pilot. Our new teacher induction program, we have one new administrator and 20 new teachers. We met monthly all together with mentors and new teachers, which was wonderful. Under the ELL regulations, English Language Learners, Lana Tereska and Karen Lundie, who are teachers within our region, offered a course, a workshop, so the teachers could obtain 15 professional development points in the area of ELL for relicensure. And over the summer, we are offering another ELL workshop that, which incorporates technology into ELL instruction. Building and Safety, our administrators participated in the Alice Training, with the idea of trading their own staff members in the buildings. All staff members within all schools participated in the Alice Training with support from our police departments in each town. We'd like to thank Chief Dillon for his consistent support here in Plington. Our security systems were installed in buildings to ensure student safety. Our policy manual continues to be updated and completed online. And as far as academic and civic accomplishments, Halifax hosted the Future Laker Day, and all sixth grade students within the region went, and it was a wonderful day for everyone. Denit hosted a Dare Coffee Hour with Officer Dana Smith, so parents could hear the recent trends in keeping, about keeping their children safe. Our grade one students here at Denit hosted an author's breakfast, where parents could come and view their children's writings work throughout the year. And October once again turned into a month of pain at Denit, where students raised money for breast cancer awareness. There's so many wonderful things that have occurred within this district and in the region, and I'm looking forward to seeing everything else come to fruition.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
When Lisa was putting the packets together, we were rushing because we were doing two, and we're discovering there are pieces missing. So part of mine is missing.
Maybe it's in the other pack.
I'm guessing. Lisa doesn't usually have to prepare for two school committee meetings simultaneously. Okay, well, this will get fun.
Okay. We can work through it.
We can do it. We can do it. So in your packet, you have all of the executive session minutes since I have been superintendent. We can't send them out as an email because that means they are a public document. So until we decide to release them, we have to hand them out as a hard copy. So what I'd like to ask is that you review them, and we will vote them in July on whether or not they are to be, continue to be held, or if we'll release them at that time. Again, I'm not expecting you all to read them since you just are receiving them. But these are all of them since fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, no, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, since I've been superintendent. So we went back through and put them all together for you. Mr. Fraser, you did such a lovely job about the foundation budget review at Silver Lake. Would you like to do it? You have it in your packet, the same thing I gave out at Silver Lake?
So as you may have heard me mentioning when we've been discussing some legislative issues recently, our budget is under threat, both at the state and federal level currently. Not a lot of action's been taking place recently, thus the reason why my report was so short today. But one of the things that we can do to start addressing some of the shortfalls in public funding for education here in Massachusetts is look at the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Committee, Commission, which is actually an official part of the 2015 Massachusetts State Budget. So this is not a special interest group. This was actually stakeholders from various areas of our state, along with state senators and state house reps, all working together to try and address basically what's happened to our foundation budget formula since nineteen ninety-three. And what they discovered is nothing has been done to it, but yet time has gone on and things have changed in reality. The two major areas where things have changed are in special ed. The cost of special ed has chewed away more and more of our budget in the monies that are being sent back to towns from the state. Also, the cost of health care on districts has become exorbitant to the point that it's actually a hundred forty percent higher than the foundation budget estimates it to be. So when these two things happen, what ends up happening is the regular ed teachers are the area where we start cutting in the classrooms as well. So I'd like to read a resolution where we would endorse moving forward at the state level with the recommendations of the commission. Whereas the Constitution of the Commonwealth requires it shall be the duty of legislatures and magistrates in all future periods of this Commonwealth to cherish the interests of literature and the sciences, public schools and grammar schools in the towns. And whereas McDuffie versus the Secretary of Executive Office of Education declared the Massachusetts Constitution imposed an enforceable duty on the magistrates and legislatures of this Commonwealth to provide education in the public schools for the children there enrolled, whether they be rich or poor, without regard to the fiscal capacity of the community or district in which, in which such children live. It shall be declared also that the constitutional duty is not being currently fulfilled by the Commonwealth. And whereas Hancock versus the Commissioner of Education concluded, I do not suggest that the goals of education reform adopted since McDuffie have been fully achieved. Clearly, they have not. Nothing I say today would insulate the Commonwealth from a successful challenge under the Education Clause in different circumstances. And whereas the Massachusetts Budget and Policy Center reported in Cutting Class, found the real value of the original foundation budget has eroded significantly over time to a large part to the rapid cost growth of for healthcare and special education. Since the foundation budget's original design did not foresee this rapid cost growth, spending restrictions have been forced into other key areas, especially regular education teachers. And whereas the Foundation Budget Review Commission resolved the good work begun by the Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, and the educational progress made sense, will be at risk so long as our school systems are fiscally strained by the ongoing failure to substantively reconsider the adequacy of the foundation budget. Therefore, we, the Plimpton Elementary School Committee, petitioned the one hundred ninetieth General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to implement without further delay in full the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission.
I would, I would make a motion that we, that we support this and send this along. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
And we're going around to all four school committees to have this. It's going throughout the state of Massachusetts, and we'll see. Brockton actually, I think, is talking about, I don't know if they actually voted it, putting up a hundred thousand dollars to start legal action against the state for not meeting foundation. It's, we definitely are struggling with some of the things we have to fund.
Well, Plimpton, has it ever been fully funded?
No, nowhere it has.
And we're really down, we're really low on that, aren't we? I think it's from what you're supposed to get.
We're lucky to be in the position we're in compared to many of our neighboring communities. I'm afraid that our worst years are yet to come.
Absolutely. I agree. We wanted to have a discussion about potentially having paperless meetings. As I'm, as I'm flipping through all of my papers. So what would that, what would we need to do to make that be successful? Would you need to have access to a Chromebooks?
I think it depends on each member. I think Jason and I both have computers, so we just need Wi-Fi.
You could bring one?
Yeah.
Or we could supply it here. I know the principle. I could make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to move in that direction. I don't, you know, I end up, you know, a few times a year going through the stack of stuff that comes home and throwing almost all of it out. And filing one or two things away. It'd be easier for me to know that it's here and I can look it up when I need it.
We would still need some paper executive session minutes, for instance.
Oh, sure.
But I think there would be many things that we would no longer need to have.
But I mean, just, just looking around here, I mean, what do we do? Quarter to a half ream of paper every meeting?
I'd rather not talk about it.
Yeah. I, I'm fully in support of that. We've talked about it before with the other members, and no one was particularly objecting, so I say we move ahead. Someone probably needs to reach out to them just to see what they require, whether they need a Chromebook.
Could I ask that we have Chromebooks available for the July meeting? And we'll just plan on having them here.
Okay.
And then that way.
I'm not going to bring my computer because I'm just thinking somebody might be using it.
Yep, yep, that's fine. We'll have Chromebooks. So we will move towards July.
And the Wi-Fi password.
That would be a helpful thing to have.
Because that way we can, I prefer to just do it on one.
I've struggled a couple times in various buildings getting the correct passwords for the Wi-Fi. At various meetings, depending who's there that night.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, they rotate. They change within timeframes for obvious reasons, so.
Steve could just maybe send us an update when like the guest one changes or something, so we could know.
Yep.
Yep.
Doesn't seem unreasonable.
And they do vary in different locations.
It's not the same anywhere.
It's not the same.
Right. I'm hooked into the middle school when I walk in. High school in here, it's totally different.
Okay.
It's a problem.
Yeah. If it makes you feel any better, everybody has it.
Yeah. I think Mr. Duke, we ended up putting me on a different number.
Yeah, probably. It's all who you know. I might be on that number also. Okay, excellent. So we'll, we'll give it a try in July. I don't think, is there anything that that wouldn't work for?
No, still, maybe we just send out the cover sheet of the close-up, just so everything kind of gets a snapshot.
Yep.
We'll move towards it.
I mean, as, when it's, I know. When it's, when it's needed, it's needed.
Sure.
I think.
I think it's great. I'd love to, and I think this is the perfect place to try it. So this is excellent.
Excellent.
There was also, I'm sorry.
You noticed on your report that there's no mention of our meeting date, but it's signed on to us in our packet.
We have in your packet, you have the organization chart that we voted last month and this that you voted last month. So this is just a hard copy. Did they not change the date?
It sounds weird, but I think the Monday, March twenty-seventh is actually twenty-sixth.
Okay. I have no idea.
That was the only thing I noticed. I was putting them all into my calendar.
Yeah, you voted this last month, I believe?
Right, yeah, absolutely. But I was entering them into my calendar.
Oh, yes.
March twenty-sixth.
Okay. I'll, I'll have Lisa update. We're not doing that well today. Sorry about that. It's very busy this time of year. And the paper that I was looking for, I realized somehow when we changed and added the bus route discussion and survey fell off, which was my Planning for Success presentation. Since it's not on the agenda, I'm not going to worry about the fact it's not in my packet. That will be a July discussion. How's that for flexibility?
It's perfect.
I didn't know where it went. It was there. Okay, we're good. Approval warrants process. I believe you wanted to discuss about the possibility of having one person sign warrants.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is as part of the Municipal Modernization Act. This is now permitted that committee can appoint an individual to sign in lieu of the rest of the committee. If that individual does do that, they are required at the next committee meeting to let the rest of the committee know what, what has happened. I think particularly as we head into the summer, it probably makes sense to do that so that we make sure that,
We always have them.
You know, you can get one person instead of trying to get three.
Yes. Sounds great.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Is the reason for doing that, if we don't have a meeting, then only one person has to, we have to attract that one person to sign the warrant, but still bring them to the regular meetings to be signed?
I mean, I think it's probably easier to do that. I mean, we can, or we can just do one signature at the meetings too. You know, I think we can kind of see how it goes. I wanted to make sure that we have it on record to at least avail ourselves of that, should we need to. And then if we decide to, you know, I think if, if folks are here, it probably makes just as much sense to have everyone review without having to then go through it all. Because if, if, if we have one person do it at the meeting, they're then going to have to kind of go through what they just signed. So you're not really saving too much time there. So you're, you're not around a bit, so do you want to, I'd be happy to do that and be available because I can generally, within a couple of days, I can get myself over there or have something here for me to sign or whatever it is.
Okay.
And I don't think there's anything to say that this couldn't be redesignated to share the wealth of various points where we can all kind of.
Yep, we can rotate. Okay. I'm happy to take first, first pass.
I make a motion to have John, the Plimpton School Committee, designate to sign the warrants.
All in favor? Aye.
Great. Thank you so much.
Do that tonight, too.
Excellent. Okay, and the final thing was, bus route discussion and survey. You may remember that the committee voted along with Kingston and Halifax and Silver Lake to hire the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials to review our transportation program and policy. And after reading through the document, there was some discussion on whether or not there's some efficacy and some better ways of running the routes. Is there any other way of looking at it? When the school committee decided last month, they thought about sending out a survey to families about whether or not it may be possible to hold more group stops instead of stopping individually at so many homes. So the thought was, if you came up with some questions, you would send them to us, and we would put together a Survey Monkey document. I have not received any questions. I don't know if anybody has any, or if you.
We can speak to that.
Perfect.
Would you want to?
So I actually created a survey and created an explanation of why we were sending out that survey. And then I showed it to my sample of the population. It was reminded of what June is like, how the tension spans can do, and what kind of responses we might elicit. And it seemed like it was being a little bit harsh to try and rush it out at this point.
Sure.
John and I discussed this last Monday at the Slough meeting. We think it would be wiser to wait until October. Seems that's when people kind of have a little bit more time, a little bit more patience, they thought it's here, they have some routine, and make them be a little bit more thoughtful in my thoughts about the actual answers. We'd also like to invite parents to come to the school committee meeting and maybe start with an open discussion where anybody can come with any of their ideas, or any of their issues about how the buses are currently being run, just to have that public forum set. So it's not just a survey to acknowledge that we want to give feedback to the people as well. So we decided to hold back on.
Great, thank you. That works for me. I think that's a smart idea, actually.
And then, you know, when you, when you do sometimes take that pause and take a step back. We're also going to survey, you know, a group of parents whose kids are no longer going to be impacted by that because their kids are graduating.
Exactly.
And you're missing the group of parents whose kids are going to be here for seven years.
Right.
So we sort of figured that didn't make so much sense. And, and I think that, that's a good idea as well. We could, you know, even have the survey in, you know, in October and then follow it up. You know, if it's depending on our timing, either in the October meeting, where we can also talk about what the survey said or didn't say, or in the November meeting. And really kind of, really encourage folks to, to come and give us their thoughts. You know, and, and, and just to be clear with folks out there watching, that's what we're looking for here. I don't think we have any preconceived ideas of, of what we need to do other than to, if people feel it's reasonable and if we can get some savings in time, even if you reduce the bus rides by eight minutes. That's eight minutes that the last kid on the bus gets back that day. That could be useful, but if it causes other issues, then maybe it's not. So we need the information. We need the information from folks out there about what they're experiencing. And we need to have that to decide whether we do anything or, or whether there are some options out.
Perfect.
Okay.
Judge, would you maybe consider that the, maybe the time change on that, on that one particular meeting?
I think, I think, I think that is something we should, we should think about. I think perhaps it needs to be a little bit later and we can, as we.
I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I, I, I agree. It's, you know, we, I know we all.
It's a big issue to accomplish, you know.
Even, even six o'clock is sometimes difficult. So, you know, that would probably be a, a good idea. We might even meet and then have that part at, even if we met at six-thirty.
We could set a time.
And then have a seven o'clock for that part of it, so people do have the time to get home and, and come down. Because again, if we don't have the feedback, then we're kind of operating a little bit blind. So it's an excellent idea.
And again, in your packet is the meeting schedule. And the other piece that I did want to mention to you is the MASCE conference in November. If you are interested in attending, there is an end of the year reduced rate. It's, if we register you before July fifteenth, it's down to three seventy-five instead of four seventy-five. I know Jason will be going, and he will be representing and voting for Silver Lake. And I assume might also be willing to vote for Plimpton if no one else is interested or able to attend. That would be up to you. But it's always a great meeting. I think you do get a lot out of it if you're able to attend. We also will be doing a presentation on the Planning for Success model that we put in place, and that I will tell you about next month. When it's on the agenda. I'm not sure what's going on today. But anyway, so I don't know if anyone besides Jason is interested, but it's, it is worthwhile. Okay. It's November one through four.
Okay.
There's also some kind of discounted rate for the Friday and the Saturday as well. I, I really get energized by going to it and get some very good ideas. The keynote speakers have always been top-notch. And the selection of different workshops to go to allows you to find areas where you might need to improve. Or just areas that you're very interested in. There's a, there's a good catalog of workshops. I highly recommend.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And that's all I had.
All right. And we have no need for executive session today, which is great. And anything else? No? All right, with that, thank you, everyone, for attending, and thank you out there, and have a good evening.